This is the regular business meeting of the Riverside District 96 School Board. Today is March 20, 20th. Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Barsadi?
Present.
And Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Okay, a present as quorum, or quorum as present, excuse me.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
All right, well, first item for me is a group of student presenters. We have our peer mentors here and we have April May, our principal from Hauser, here to introduce them.
Good evening, welcome to Hauser. We wanted to share with you a little bit today, our peer mentor program. So this has been a pilot program that Mr. Mead has started and modeled after the mentors at OPRF High School. And these very brave nine, there are 10, one person couldn't be here, student leaders are going to give you a little update on their program and we are hoping to grow the program as we move forward next year.
Hi, we are the peer mentors and we're here to present what peer mentoring is. I'm Olivia, this is Mia, Cora, Sophia, Grace, CJ, Rotis, Violet, Nula, and the one that isn't here is Leo.
All right, so what is peer mentoring? Peer mentoring is a class you can take in the eighth grade meant to teach about leadership, mainly by going into sixth grade Cougar Connections classes and teaching them about important life skills. In this class, you'll also help out the local community.
This is everything that we're going to talk about today. Violet and Olivia will talk about class structure. CJ will talk about pushing in the classes. Grace and I will talk about volunteer opportunities. Rotis and Nula will talk about the selection process. Cora and Mia will talk about benefits and learning opportunities. And if you have any questions, we can answer them.
Hi, I'm Violet, I'm going to be talking about class structure. In Mondays and Tuesdays, we usually work in Mr. Mead's class and go over our activities for the week, which means annotating and going over our plans for our Cougar Connections classes. We also work on writing prompts and essays, usually about skills we learned from books or reading in class.
On Wednesdays and Thursdays, we follow the plans that we annotated on Monday and Tuesdays. Friday, we usually play a game of our choosing. And then after the 15 minutes with our Cougar Connections, we go back to Mr. Mead's class.
Hello, my name's CJ and I'll talk to you about pushing classes. Pushing classes are the sixth grade Cougar Connections classes you'll go into and you'll get a group of sixth graders to work with over the course of the year. In the classes, you will do an announcement, activity, and reflection. The announcement's usually like a quote and the activity is usually like a fun game or an activity to go with the prompt. And the reflection is just to go over what you guys did that day.
Volunteer opportunities. As a peer mentor, you get to go and help out at all four elementary schools, such as Central, Ames, Hollywood, and Blythe. When you work with the first and second graders, you read a book to them and then after reading the book, you like answer questions with them. With third and fourth graders, we do various activities, such as holiday cards around winter break and team building activities. Then with fifth grade, we do school-based activities to help out the community.
Along with those, we have four other volunteer opportunities. We go to the WSAE Conference. There, we work with OPRF's peer mentors on how to be a better leader and communicator. We also will, or the seventh graders will also go to White Pines with the sixth graders to help facilitate their downtime. The PTO ran pasta dinner. You guys will help serve pasta to incoming sixth graders and as they get to know Hauser. And finally, we help run STEAM and science stations to elementary schools and their family science night. Hello, I'm...
This selection process. So the people who can apply can only be taken a foreign language class or band orchestra orchestra. If you take a foreign language and band orchestra orchestra, you can't apply because this class takes up a full encore slot and it will last the entire year. A date for the informational meeting will be during lunch in room 109 on Wednesday, April 17.
Permission slips for the interview will be distributed after school in the office on April 2. The final interview will be on April 23. There's 22 people in the class, but there's no limit to how many people can apply for the class.
I'm Cora and I'm going to, me and Mia are going to be talking about the benefits and learning opportunities of the class of peer mentoring. So first, peers getting to build friendships with people in grades below and getting to just meet new people that are younger than you. And second is learning new things. In peer mentoring, you not only have fun, but you learn many things about mental and physical health using passages, books, and articles to expand your knowledge on mental and physical health.
One of the most fun parts about peer mentoring is the volunteering. So we get to go to all the elementary schools and help out with the community. And then we get to go to the WSAE Conference in Hodgkins to learn how to be a better leader and a better person in general. And then they will get to go to White Pines with the sixth graders to help them out and have fun with them.
And then what are your questions for us?
Who does the interviewing?
Last year, it was teachers, the vice principal, and the principal. This year, I believe it will be us plus, I believe, like the vice principal, principal.
So you said there's no limit, how many people have participated? I mean, how many people, obviously you have minus one person now, but how many people have participated in the past?
There's 10 people in the class right now, but that's because it's a pilot. So next year, there'll be 22 people.
Sure.
So anyone can apply, but there's a selection process, so only 22 people can make it in. But for us, we got like selected into it, they just picked us out. But next year, anyone can apply.
Since there are 10 and there are a lot more sixth graders than that, I mean, are you mentoring more than one or?
We only go into two classes right now, but each person has a group of about three to five people, so it kind of varies. And this year, we kind of like hovered around some of the classes. So we got to like meet other seventh graders, we did seventh graders this year. We got to meet other seventh graders. And but next year, it's going to be more people. So they're going to have like an assigned sixth grade class that they're going to be in on certain days of the week.
Just real quickly, I have a sixth grader here at Hauser. So thank you so much for the great work that you do with all of our sixth graders and personally, of course, with my own child. I saw a little footnote in there about two books that you all were either reading or currently reading, the Seven Habits for Highly Effective Teens and the Student Leadership Challenge book. Any, I guess, has anybody gotten through either of those? Okay, what are some, something that you have learned from that book? Any insights or some habits that you've learned from there that you could share?
We've learned about like most of our leadership skills, especially in the seven habits. That's the one we've already finished and we're on our second book now. We usually do every two weeks, we do a essay or like a seven, a seven like sentence starter about like different like chapters in the book. We, a lot of what we've like learned have been like, like what we teach our seventh grade classes right now. We teach them like what we learn in the book. Like if we're, like some weeks, we're talking about respect. Some weeks, we're talking about communication. Some, we're talking about like being like, being like a good friend and like being like helpful to like community. So we go over like, we use our books to help like our Cougar Connections classes.
I guess to go like more specifically into it, like something I've learned is to be like proactive and like prioritizing stuff over other stuff. So I guess like those are examples of what you can learn from reading those books.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. You guys, I liked how you each, you answered the questions, but then somebody else would step in and add a few more details. That was, you worked really well together with that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'd like to also just introduce Mr. Mead, who's been back here in the background. So Mr. Mead is the teacher of the peer mentors program, obviously letting the students take the lead, which is, which is great. Thank you for that. But also, Rob attended the Student Leadership Workshop that we did, what, two years ago? And was really taken by an idea on how the high school was making this happen and just really came to know April and Chris and said, I think we should do this at the middle school and appreciate that commitment to making this happen. So thanks, Rob.
Actually, that was a question I had, is like how did it evolve? Where did it come from?
How did it evolve? Do you want to?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure, how did this program evolve?
Yeah, so again, like Dr. said, two years ago in November, we went to the WSAE Conference in Hodgkins. I thought it was a really cool program, thought it was meaningful. And I thought that could be really beneficial during our Cougar Connection times. It's like 15 minutes each day and kids really get the opportunity to like work with their small groups and get to build like really close relationships with them. And then hopefully, you know, bring it back to the Hauser way and how kids can be like respectful, positive, and polite with each other in the school. So that was kind of the main focus, is try to make just the school more interconnected with each other.
Sounds very good.
Thank you. No other questions, thank you so much. No, really, anything else?
I bet it's going to be popular. I know that the email just went out about signing up for encores and I know you all had the timeline on there, but I imagine it's going to be a popular selection.
Yeah, I think so. And they do a great job of hyping it up. So and plus, they're doing a really good job as mentors. So I'm sure that they're leading by example and I think the kids will really want to be in that same position then.
Yeah, it looked like a lot of work also outside the class, but it sounds to be very meaningful and rewarding, so.
I think it's a good insight on like what teachers get to do. We did a volunteering service at Central and CJ was so like, his butt was kicked by 11:30. Like it was really funny to see. So they're getting really good insight and helping the community.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks so much for coming. And I know this is a busy group, so some of them were in the musical, I think, the past two nights. Yes, yeah, on the go, so they will clear out and probably should. So just because they're busy, that's what I mean. Yeah, I will just, yeah. Provide all of you just with the update and a few other superintendent report items. Wanted to share with you that we did on February 28, we had a half-day session on our Living the Plan, our ongoing strategic plan work and just another group of really committed individuals. It's our district leaders and some teacher leaders that join us around our identified goal areas of the strategic plan. We're now in year three of the strategic plan and that session very much reflected that we're kind of right in the middle of things. I feel like things are really rolling and we're moving forward in all of our goal areas. And really, sort of the best way to put it is we're kind of in the thick of it now and it feels good. It feels like there's a lot of direction and a lot of momentum. One of our challenges when we meet is the Living the Plan group is always to make sure we're challenging ourselves to communicate with the district at large, also with our families, so that people understand where we are with our progress on our strategic plan. And at this particular session, we also really looked and examined our vision. So if you recall, we'd spend a lot of time on mission, vision, and values and just that opportunity to just not just dig right into the goals, but to also really reflect on the visions that we had identified for our students. So that was always valuable and it's always great to get the perspective of the many different people in the room in terms of how we're progressing and all that. So wanted to share that. Any questions or anything about that?
You just said it, the attendees.
It's our district leadership team, so it's all the principals, assistant principal, our district office administrators, and then there are five teacher leaders. So our like head EL teacher, Katie Kayastra, who's our student support coordinator here, Drew Ducci, who was one of our teachers that was very involved when we wrote the strategic plan and was very committed to some of our culture responsive work and very much wanted to be part of it. Sarah Hickey, who's one of our instructional coaches, is my partner with Family Community Partnership. So it's sort of the district leadership team plus, plus a few others. I have information there for all of you on the Behavior Intervention Committee that's required to meet annually. And I believe Kelly Rathman-Hunt and I think Marlo Kalik were part of that committee. So that is to ensure that we are following the appropriate practices and both policies and procedure-wise in terms of discipline and support and addressing any behavioral needs among special education population. So that's a requirement, but it's also, I think, a really valuable conversation. Appreciate both the parents and staff members coming together for that annually. And then I wanted to share about kindergarten information night. We launched that virtually March 7th and I think we, at this point, we have about 50 registrants, enrollees for next year. We anticipate getting a lot more, so this is really just a good time here to get the word out. This is time to register for kindergarten for families that may have not done that yet. And then last but not least, it's hard to believe it's Wednesday today. Yesterday was Tuesday, Institute Day. As you know, we did an Institute Day on Tuesday because it was a local election day and it's been our goal then to have both students and staff out of, really Hauser at this point is our only building that's used as a polling place. I think there's three or four precincts in the Hauser library now at the same time. So we actually did all of our professional development work at Ames and at Blythe. I think it worked out really well. Congratulations to Angela and I know Nora had to head home not feeling well tonight, but a lot of planning and preparation goes into that. A lot of great pieces, you have the schedule there, a lot of great components around professional development. I was able to spend some time listening in from the Illinois Resource Center, who spoke with our staff about supporting students who are not native English speakers and just felt like that was a great presentation and very timely for us right now. That's superintendent's report.
I'm assuming there were no issues with the election?
No, and I, you know, I wasn't even here. I was over at Ames and Blythe myself and I know someone said, what does turnout look like? And I couldn't even tell you.
It was more things that would have affected us.
Yeah, and like some would have been like a high turnout might have felt busier in the building, but I, you know.
I doubt that it was.
Yeah.
So at Blythe, was it the meeting in the library in the basement or was it?
Up in the gym.
Okay.
And same at Ames, we were in the gym. And then some like, I think psychologists and social workers met in one of the classrooms. So there's some of the small groups met in some of the other areas. But by splitting the group in half essentially, it really worked out fine. It would have been hard to get everybody, you know, here we can get everybody in the auditorium. But it was good with the topics and the way the day was split up. We're not necessarily all together all day anyway for an Institute Day.
Good. Would the board secretary please read the consent agenda?
Sure. Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of the following minutes of the following meetings. The February 7th Committee of the Whole Meeting along with the February 7th Closed Session Meeting Minutes. The February 21st Regular Business Meeting Minutes along with the Closed Session Meeting Minutes from February 21st, both our first session and second session. The Personnel Report as presented. Just, I want to note two AV tech positions on there. Those are kind of ad hoc, part-time support positions, just to provide some clarity. And then the Payables Pre-List as of February 29th along with the Payables Pre-List as of March 20th and the Ladsy Classroom Lease for the 24-25 school year.
Are there any items that anyone would like to pull out of the consent agenda? Seeing as there are none, can we have a motion to approve?
I think you need to read it out or read out the consent.
Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
A second.
Or, sorry, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
And Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, can we have a motion and then to authorize the notice of non-renewal to non-tenured permanent substitute teachers?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'd just like to note, and Martha can correct me, this is a standard procedure. Teachers, that's the, that was the condition that...
Yeah, the permanent subs are not considered permanent long-term positions, so they are non-renewed annually. And then also, somebody would not be in that position for more than three years so that they don't acquire tenure in that role because it's not meant to be a tenured long-term position.
Right, thank you.
That's not the intention, yeah.
I could not remember the exact details. Kathy, can you call, is there any discussion? Seeing as there's none, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
No, I'm good. Any board member comments?
I just wanted to mention, you talked about the play. I did not have a child in the Spring Musical, but I still attended with my son because Little Shop of Horrors is one of our favorite movies. And it's just, I was so impressed by the stage production, certainly the talent. I mean, it just takes so much to get up there. And yeah, I mean, it being more part of the Hauser community now, having a child here, I was just really impressed and blown away by all the work that goes into it. I know we also had some really great feedback on like the Book Bowl recently here. So just reminds me of all the really great things that, you know, we do in the district for the community, for the students. It was nice to be a part of it.
Clearly, I can see.
I loved it, I thought it was so good. I came home and I was like, that was so great. And I was there with my son. He thought it was so great too, so.
Facebook memory popped up for me and that was 10 years ago when they did Little Shop of Horrors.
Oh, really?
Previously, so I didn't, I wondered, I remember they had the big Audrey.
Yes, Audrey too, we were just fascinated by it, like as a prop that is, you know, on the stage. My son kept trying to figure it out and see what he could, you know, spy back there, but.
And the set, and you said it well, the talent, all of it, yeah. I know April has watched it, how many times, April? Four, yeah, the past two nights, so she said she has an earworm on some of those songs, but yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I love the students get to, you know, take some time during the day to watch it as well. I was actually being like, oh, cool, if we could bring like the elementary students over also, you know, but.
We do actually do that every other year.
Oh, okay.
As part of the Little Symphony Series.
Oh, it includes one other place.
So next year will be the year that elementary, I believe, second through fifth graders will come to see the musical.
Oh, okay.
So they do that every other year.
Maybe I missed that EB did that, very cool.
So I know this was brought up sort of briefly last time, but just sort of reiterating that, and I forgot the proper title was, but the technology, having an individual come in for technology, talking about technology use and sort of, I thought it was extremely helpful and I'm very glad that we're doing this as a district. And so I would, again, highly recommend if parents haven't done it, they should do it when this comes around again. There was actually ironically enough, this past week, there was an article, a lengthy article in the Washington Post, talking about Discord and some pretty horrific things that have happened to kids 10, 11, 12, 13-year-olds, so.
There have been a slew of articles and some other publications as well about the negative effects.
So I do think it's very worthwhile. So I appreciate that we're doing this as a district.
And thank you for reminding us because we, we were talking like, do we bring him in every year? Does it lose, is it every other year? So yeah, he was, and you know, we had an audience of 100, which for us is a good audience. I mean, we would hope for even more, but yeah.
But as he pointed out, he's like going where is everyone else, so.
I would like to note, I think Blythe Park recently, I had their celebration of one book, or excuse me, one school, one book. They were reading Odd the Frog. I read it kind of too, about half of it, I think I got. And definitely was a great time, just a great celebration. And I'm thinking the other elementaries do that, correct?
Yes, now all four elementaries have a one-book-one-school event. We'd even talked about doing a one district, one-book-one-district event and the schools love it so much that they would like us to not have. I'm not allowed to take that over as a district event or we are not. So it's great and there's a lot of school spirit, a lot of fun around choosing the book and I know the reveal at Hollywood's a really big deal, but just all the, there's a lot of creativity around teachers and parents who are all involved in making the readings happen, the selection, the schools get decorated and...
It's in particular in having, you know, family where you have kids in the same school in different grades, it's great that they're both working on the same thing so many times in parenting. It's why can't I do this? It's great having them all pitch in on that and have a great time at it.
Do we know how long ago that started? And if you don't?
I know it's been in place, I think, since I've been here, so I would guess maybe even before. I think maybe Hollywood was the first.
I wanted to say that, but I didn't want to disappoint any other schools.
Right, right. Yeah, and I could be by saying it, but that's my recollection. Now I have to go back into the archives and figure that out, so.
We can just ask Kim.
Yeah, we'll ask Kim.
Any other comments? Seeing as there's none, the next item is the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the new calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need any discussion? This is a required element of our budgeting process and has a number of dates that we meet to, Dave, maybe you...
Yeah, no, I mean, we discussed this, yeah, I mean, we discussed this last, last meeting. It's just, as you mentioned, it's sort of part of the requirements. I guess, does anyone have questions on it?
Just the only question I had and I, I'm assuming this is, this is the case, is that my recollection on some previous policy created, you know, additional requirements and like reporting at certain meetings. And I presume that is kind of like either reflected in this calendar or maybe the calendar doesn't need to go that deep into it.
No, it's reflected, I would sort of defer to Jim if you're looking for like more specifics, but these are the important dates that we need to be focusing on, so.
I think these are always the dates just to keep us on track. Plus, there's, you know, the publishing of the notice and to give the community a chance to have input if they so choose.
I guess there's really been no changes, right?
I kind of feel like it memorialized our practices.
That's what I, okay, that's sort of what I was, that's a good way of putting it, memorializing our practices. No, that was it, thanks for confirming.
Any other comments? Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
And Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Better OBIs.
Well, we have quorum, so.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Next item is the Second Trimester Update on Chronic Absenteeism.
Right, and this isn't an action item and had sort of debated if this belonged better under the superintendent's report. Old business, I know the board had asked specifically that we make sure to sort of highlight for all of you and bring to your attention our numbers around chronic absenteeism. So thanks to Don Tifano and Jonathan Hoffman for really digging into all of our Power School data and presenting this in a way that I think hopefully makes sense to all of you. I'm sure it does. An opportunity to look at our numbers and how we're improving, but still have, have issues with chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of the school year. And I know this is something that really gained a lot of attention, not just locally, really regionally, state, nationally, post-pandemic, that this idea that somewhere children weren't coming to school as regularly. And some of it during the pandemic, we know just the disruption to the schedules may have impacted some of this, actual illness may have impacted some of this. We know, we've talked a lot about mental health and school anxiety and things like that. There is an impact related to that as well. So it's not a, there's not a single factor in terms of why a child may miss an excessive amount of school. There's not a single factor in terms of how we intervene and address it, but I do believe that our team has a lot of different ways that we go about addressing this and I'm pleased to see some improvements in the numbers. I know we're about half roughly. I know we're about half roughly of state averages. I know I was looking at the state report card from last school year, and the state was at 28.3% chronic absentee, and we were at 15%. And the year prior to that, the state was a little higher at 29.8, and we were at 14. So kind of, you know, pretty, pretty similar numbers, but.
Actually, that was one of two points I was going to recommend, maybe it might be useful for, for us to see that comparison to state average.
Sure.
And then also if there's a good reference year prior to the pandemic.
Yep.
That might be good to see as well.
Just 2019, I would think.
I would think, yes.
Oh, prior to the pandemic.
Prior to the pandemic, yes.
Twenty.
2018, 19, yeah.
Yeah, because.
I know I did look that up, but I think I noted it on the memo.
Yeah.
I think it's noted on the memo.
I have it on a file in my office, I know, yeah.
Just so again, so you have a reference, you actually look at the memo, I believe it's on there.
Okay, let me see.
It's on the bottom, it's a little footnote on the bottom.
Okay.
Thank you. Overall chronic percentage was 9% prior to the pandemic, so still quite a bit higher than those pre-pandemic.
Yes, thank you, Don, thank you for putting that. So there's clearly been a change.
All right. So I guess, one thing I just sort of, I noticed, and I don't know if there's, if there's any correla-, I mean, not correlation, but if we can find out, if we know anything, because I'm looking at like the smaller schools, like Blythe and Hollywood had significantly less absenteeism, chronic absenteeism than the other schools, and I was just sort of wondering, is there?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Do we have like any sense?
You know, I think middle school is a different.
Right, yeah.
Situation for children, but the elementary is, it's, it's hard to know. I know the principals have done some digging, and Angela's done some digging, as has Nora, like around like also correlation with low income, correlation with geography, location, like are there just children that have a longer distance to school? The distance thing doesn't seem to correlate. You know, I know the questions come up about would some families be helped by transportation? You know, it's a, it's a hard one, because I know there's not a, a single answer to all of that, but it's an interesting observation. I don't know, Angela, if you'd have any reflection, I know we've spent time in our district leadership team, but that, that Central and Ames seem to have a higher level of absenteeism than Blythe and Hollywood.
I think part of that just comes from it being a larger school, larger pool of students to pull from for probability, with a larger number of students, probably going to have a larger number of situatances and so forth. But what we're seeing is different family situations, and that's where the principals have been in contact with families, on what they can do to assist for what might be needed or why students are being, are chronically absent. And without getting into personal details, like it's just some things are out of the school's control, more in a family realm, and we continue to work with our social workers, our psychologists, and our principals in assisting our families. And then at the junior high, also working with our ALOP person to help out too.
And what we've learned really about our ALOP program is it's a great support and assistance for the child and to make up missed schoolwork, to have a point of contact in the school, that family outreach in some more significant situations, we've, we will employ the services of a Ladsy RAP worker, so somebody that can really work very much directly with the family. That, that's proven to be also a very supportive intervention. I do know.
Is there a high correlation with RAP families and chronic absenteeism?
Yes, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that's one of the indicators that would probably trigger RAP services being needed, that the child is, that there's a struggle just to get the child to school. I know the ALOP program, the state, the West 40 regional offices reached out to us and said, you know, we are going to petition to the state to potentially be able to offer ALOP to younger grades. So if you recall, it was really just set up for middle school, so I don't know where that's, I don't know if that's been resolved, I don't think it's been resolved, or I would have, have heard that, but if that became an option, that might be something worth considering also. And maybe like, you know, David, to your point too, like, is it helping out? We would love it in our, in the way our school is configured, that a lot of times, somebody to help or that can help in multiple schools is often a good model for us, especially with the smaller schools. Right now, the ALOP program is set up that they want to really connect with one single school and be, stay on that school. So we have to explore that, if that became an option.
No, I mean, I also sort of like wondering, because I noticed there was a pretty significant drop from last year, because last year, but, and we, I'm, I know we can't really tease this out in the data, but I'd just be interested, sort of wondering, how much of that was people were still being hypervigilant last year and not sending their kids to school? I know, I know I've said this before, I know I was one, my family was one of it, I mean, it had a sniffle, we generally kept.
I do, and that was why I'm curious about the 2019 numbers, because I do wonder, it seems like the further we get away from the pandemic, some things tend to, you know, we still have ripples in the pond, but they are smoothing out over time. I would be interested to see, does this trend back, you know, to the original origin numbers, or is it, does it stay elevated?
Right.
That's a good question. The problem is, is only time will tell.
Yes.
I mean, that's what stinks about this, is there's aspects that we know we can try and help with ALOP and.
Family outreach.
Outreach.
Yeah, direct support to students, you know, sometimes students who get behind in school, and it's a.
It can snowball.
It snowballs, right, and now I'm behind, now I don't want to go because I'm behind. So I think that academic support is really important for children as they're coming back. Even if it's been an illness, an actual illness, it's not that they, you know, are not really ill, or that the family's in crisis in some way, it's just sometimes that's very hard to come back after missing even just a handful of days, so. That's where I think we have a, I'm pleased with the team we have, like you mentioned social work and, and just even just the academic support that a teacher provides. So I know April and Chris here at Hauser have a pretty elaborate system of identifying those kids, you know, academic indicators and attendance indicators, and those are the things that really point to them as, a child is at risk.
Quick question, and this, Don, this might go to more to you, just because I'm looking at you as a data research person. How far back do we have data? And could you, what's the earliest year do you think you could reach into the numbers to try and find an absence number?
I can tell you off the top of my head.
Can you take a look at that? I'm just curious, is there another, you know, take two years way back as far, just, and don't, you know, if it's available or not, I'm just curious, is there some other 2019?
I know there's data available, it's a question of what data is available.
Oh, and that's.
Oftentimes, I know when we look back at data, oftentimes, we're going to the report card for a lot of those.
Okay.
The way we report, because it's all there and it's all in place.
And that's fine, too.
And I think chronic absenteeism was a new indicator in the state report card.
I think, and the state only goes back like six or seven years.
And that's why I'm thinking it's something that's somewhere.
Yeah, they go back to, looks like they go back to 2018, just when you look at the trend data around chronic absenteeism, I'm just pulling up our state report card.
Okay.
And I think in the initial memo that we did, we did have, like, since then, just kind of, we just grabbed out District 96 versus the other whiskey districts.
You might have.
The initial memo from January. But I think the overall trend, and you see them in all the districts, everyone's kind of spiked and is coming down at different rates.
Okay. Time, that's what everybody wants. Any other discussion on?
So our plan is to bring this to you each trimester, so we wait for the trimester to end, and then it's a cow or a board meeting, depending on sort of the trimester end dates, and we can bring this data forward. So thanks for taking a look at it.
Thank you. Thank you for pulling this out.
Yeah, definitely.
Next item, can we have a motion to approve the revised Board of Education meeting dates?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? These were on the basis of some discussions over the past couple meetings.
Yeah, just a few date changes that were recommended, so just wanted to make sure it's clear for everybody on your calendars.
Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. The one item on our new business is just a brief discussion on the donation of some art that was registered no longer with the school after the renovations.
I think it's with the school.
So, so we still have the items, they're, they're boxed.
Right.
And they were, if you recall, they hung in the entryway to Central School, and they had to be taken down when we did the front office renovation. And then there's a question of rehanging them, they're large, and I'm not even sure, Kathy was instrumental helping us make the connection with St. Mary's. They, quite honestly, they, they have a feel, a feeling like a more religious piece of art, which I think is what, what started the conversations with.
They're very traditional.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even say.
They're on a children, they're replicas of art on a children's hospital in Italy, so they're not meant to be religious, but they are cherubs.
Yeah, so they, like much, like much of our past history, there's an awful lot that has undertones too.
Yeah, yeah.
When religion was a little bit more.
And we did reach out to the Riverside Historic Society, who put us in touch with an art estimator, art collector, who looked at them prior to our taking them down in 2019, and described them as having what he calls owner's value, which is like, I'll use my word sentimental value. If you like them, they're, they're valuable to you, but they don't really have a strong monetary value.
These aren't playing on the Antiques Roadshow.
I think so, I think they would get the eh, so.
Probably not. So that's really, that's the only item?
Yeah, and I, do we, we don't really need to vote on that, so we could go ahead and make the donation unless there's any objection or wanting to take formal action at next month's meeting.
No, honestly, I'm just glad that we were able to reach out and, as you know, work with somebody else in the community who had, who saw them as valuable and.
I am glad as well, I do remember them fondly, they do have, I'm a sentimental guy, so I do have sentiment for them, but I'd much rather have them displayed than sit in boxes in a basement somewhere, so that's, I'm glad that they can be reused.
I was just, I was just curious, and Kathy, thank you for all the kind of history and research you did in, in your memo, it was just interesting to learn as well. But we, it mentioned like a Riverside family donated them, did they donate, like, they are over 100 years old, but when were, around when were they donated? Like, sometimes these fam, you have longstanding families, so I'm like, is there still living family that like is aware that we're doing this?
That's actually what sort of Mike.
Yeah, if the landmark does a story on the.
Maybe somebody will come forward and claim.
We, there was nothing, we couldn't find anything, like a donated by, I can't remember if there was a family name attached, but we, we did the research that we could do and came up with nothing.
You had done research, we had done research early on.
Yeah.
Like I know our Hollywood bird feeder has like a longstanding family that, you know, there's still living members, so, okay.
And I, and I still know sometimes I don't think this would be the case, but I know sometimes, when donations are made, it's just sort of you want, we don't want to give it away unless there's, especially if it's sort of like some conditions, like they want it back, if, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But if we've done the research.
We've done the research to the best of our ability, so, yeah.
Right.
Very good, they get to have a new and appreciated life.
They'll stay in town.
Yep.
We offered them to the Historic Society, and because they're large, and I think, I have not been in the museum there, but it's not.
They don't have that much space. They, they have needed to curate more and more material. That was, that was the last item on our new business. Kathy, I don't see anybody else signed in for a public comment. That being said, future meeting dates, April 3rd, Committee of the Whole, 7 o'clock at Blythe Park School, unless there's closed session. April 17th, regular business meeting will be here, and again, enter into closed session if necessary, and then May 1st, Committee of the Whole in the multipurpose room at Ames. And also, sorry, flipped a page, May 15th, regular business meeting, also here in the Learning Resource Center. So.
So, Mr. President, this, this meeting is far too short, we can't adjourn it just yet. I'm not sure what we would talk about, but we're not even at 8 o'clock yet.
Just going to stare at each other for a while.